All set? All set, Caleb? Okay. All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order our work session tonight. It's Monday, November 20th. Time is 5:33 PM. And this is a work session for the Town Council Parks and Recreation Director and Recreation Advisory Board to review the 2023 beach operations. So tonight, we will have a presentation. After that, we'll have any comments or questions from the council. And then we'll, we'll close the, the work session. This, we will have beach operations on the agenda for out of Town Council meeting for the January 2nd, 2024 meeting. So at that time, members of the public are, will be able to comment on, on that agenda item. And hopefully, we'll have the 2023 beach operations information, financial, financials by then. So at this time, I will turn over the mic to our Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Kershaw.
Thank you very much, and good evening. This is the 2023 year in review of Narragansett Town Beach. Before I get started, I'd, of course, like to thank my staff. Without this team effort, we would never be able to run this beach all by ourselves. So Mr. Bill Eckert, our beach manager, Michael Florio, our waterfront safety manager, Bridgette McPhillips, who puts together all the facility packages and does all the ordering for the beach, Jerry Cattaldo, my first line of defense at Parks and Rec, who picks up the phone constantly and answers numerous beach-related questions. And of course, Linda Bailey, our office manager at the beach, who handles all the daily beach pass sales, et cetera, seasonal sales. And then, of course, our Parks Maintenance Department, led by Joe Harvey, daily beach raking every morning, beginning at 4:30 or 4 o'clock sometimes, depending on the tides. So without all of those great people, we would never be able to have the beach that we have. So thank you to all of those individuals. So we could begin the presentation. What to expect with this presentation? We're going to discuss just briefly the mission statement of Narragansett Town Beach, the definition of an enterprise fund for those in the audience that may not know exactly what that is, or those watching, the five-year beach enterprise fund balance, the five-year operating expenses versus revenue, the revenue comparisons between last year and this year, and possible future capital projects. What we will not, or what I will not be discussing this evening is fee and policy recommendations at this time. As the Town Council President said, we were going to be examining that over the next month and speaking about that at the next Rec Advisory Board meeting and hope to make recommendations to the council for the January 2nd meeting. Narragansett Town Beach. Narragansett Town Beach is a self-sustaining entity. That is, all annual expenses, administrative costs, capital expenses, improvements, and storm damages are paid for by the fees collected from users of Narragansett Town Beach. No town taxes are used to operate the beach. In fact, just about half a million dollars of the beach money goes back to the town for payment in lieu of taxes and administration fees. I included this picture in the slide presentation because this is our crew this summer from the junior lifeguard program run by Mike Florio. It's an outstanding program. It fills up very quickly. Sometimes, we even have to get more staff to let more kids into the program. They learn life-saving skills, CPR, first aid, and of course, how to be a lifeguard. So it's an outstanding program. Narragansett Town Beach is a town owned. As you see, I misspelled owned. I apologize for that. But it is open to anyone from anywhere. In fact, one out of every three people who use the beach is not a town resident. Our mission statement, as always, is to ensure long-term sustainability, create a superior beach experience, operate Narragansett Town Beach safely and efficiently, recognize that the beach is a town asset, and as such, all policies should first serve town residents and taxpayers. Ensure that a fee structure, or that fee structure, not only address annual expenses, but also provide sufficient income to address long-term capital requirements arising from building renovations, parking lot repairs, replacement, sand replenishment, storm damage, and erosion. So in a nutshell, basically preserving our infrastructure of the beach. So a beach enterprise fund, most of us in this room know exactly what it is. For those of you who are listening, or maybe in the audience that don't know, an enterprise fund establishes a separate account and financial reporting mechanism for a municipal service for which a fee is charged for a good or service. There's some examples, water, wastewater, trash, et cetera. Budgets and expenditures still require authorization by the municipal government, of course, our Town Council. Recently, as most of you know, an enterprise fund balance policy was recently reviewed and approved by the Town Council for the four enterprise funds in Narragansett. For the beach enterprise fund, the total reserve levels were established as follows. The minimum being 2.6 million, the optimal 4.5, and the maximum 5.4. This leads right into the next slide. The beach enterprise fund audited numbers. 2018, 3 million, 19, 3.8, 20, 4.6, 21, 4, 22, 4.49. Operating revenue versus expense. As I have said before, in previous years, the revenue obviously is fluctuating. Some years have been higher, some years have been lower. Most importantly, I'd like to just bring your point to the 2021 operating revenue versus the 2022 operating revenue. Again, these are our audited numbers. So as you can see, the difference where the beach is not making the money that it has in the past. And we obviously know there's several reasons for that. We've got salary increases, we've got operating expense increases, building maintenance repairs, et cetera. So again, recognizing that our fee structure is what's driving our beach to be successful is something we need to focus on. And having this policy in place now, at least we know where we should be, where we need to be, hopefully, to be able to keep the beach where it needs to be, especially with our infrastructure. This is a slide that shows, again, our revenue, expenses, and income. And as you can see by the dark line, going from, basically, the top end of the chart down to the lower end of the chart, and also the percentage, you could see that the beach is not taking in the money that it has in the past. And basically, we're pretty much flat at this point in time. Comparison between last year and this year. As we all know, June was a wash this year. However, we had a beautiful Memorial Day weekend. It was one of the best Memorial Day weekends we had. Again, a lot of rain throughout June. But as soon as June ended, July and August and into September were great. We were opened a total of 95 beach days. Nine of those days, the beach was closed due to heavy rain. But as you know, we keep the lifeguards on duty with a minimal crew to protect the water. Because of course, when we do have some high surf with rain and wind, we get a lot of lifeguard, I'm sorry, a lot of surfing activity in the water. The West Lot filled 16 times, the North Lot 3, and the South Lot 1. As you know, Bill Eckert and his crew, as the lot fills, we try to keep the traffic off the roadway. It is difficult. People like to stay, they don't want to move. Sometimes, we have to call the police to get them to move along. But we make every effort that we can to allow people that have to pay for parking and ability, the ability to do so. So we do one in, one out. And our crew over at the West job does an outstanding job keeping track of spots that are open and again, trying to be able to get everybody the ability to park. Our attendance was down slightly, again, based on our handheld counters from our staff at all of our different admission points. It looks like we're down slightly 5%. The count from the handheld counters was 187,759. Our in-house beach survey, and again, this is our survey that we do annually with Survey Monkey. This is totally separate from the beach capacity survey that went out as well. So this survey, again, is posted on our website, and I send it out globally with everybody on our server. 428 respondents took the survey. 97 were identified as resident taxpayers. And the overall beach experience was rated good or excellent at 94%. The staff was courteous and extremely courteous for 95%. And the cleanliness of the beach overall was 85%. So we look at that survey, and we think we're pretty, doing pretty well. Again, we, we do have a lot of complaints about the parking. And again, you know, it gets congested and things like that. Or, you know, the South Pavilion restrooms aren't clean, like the North Pavilion restrooms. And we work on that. We look at the answers to those surveys, and we try to improve on all of those areas for the next season. Capital improvements. As we all know, the shoreline mapping and analysis by URI, they are completing their fall survey as we speak. And probably in the next couple of months, we're going to be receiving an all-inclusive report from the University of Rhode Island on exactly what the five-year study has found. Is the beach shrinking? Is it not shrinking? What do the dunes look like? How are our sand levels, et cetera? So there will be a, a very voluminous report. However, there will be a narrative too that'll be very helpful for all of us to understand what it all means. As you know, the beach capacity study is ongoing. We hope to have a report on that in the spring, probably around April. Potential future capital projects is the deck roof at the North Beach Clubhouse. Architectural drawings are complete, and I hope to do a bid for that project in the spring. Renovations to the South Pavilion lockers. We have been talking about that over the last couple of years. I'm not exactly sure where we want to go with that. Do we want to keep them? They are a big revenue generating item for us. But there is a need for improvement to that particular area, where we go, possibly go to more of a plastic-type locker system as opposed to the wooden boxes that we have now. We also have a significant lighting issue in that area that needs to be addressed. Also, the possibility of an addition to the South Pavilion itself. As you know, each year, we have to rent storage containers for our two beach gators. That's becoming costly. We'd also like to move the South Pavilion Sales Office and kind of get that out of the whole operation where the beach office is and where the lifeguards are. I'd like to get that money secured and safe someplace else. And also, still, the talk about maybe a police substation in that building as well, garage space. So that's something I'd like to look at in the future as well. The Cabana Parking Lot needs to be improved. That was something Mr. Wright had been talking about too, prior to leaving. The addition of ADA wheelchairs. We definitely need more wheelchairs. Right now, we have four at the North Pavilion, three at the South Pavilion. Actually, it might be the opposite. But we do need a couple more of those. And also, new ADA accessible beach mats. And again, I'd like to remind everybody, even though we get a lot of requests to have ADA mats at the south end of the beach, where the south gate is, it's impossible for us to put a mat there because of the high tide. We will try to put a mat out every time we have an event that has an ADA requirement or an ADA need. But then, we do have to bring that back up because it's just going to wash away if we don't. The south at the, or the fence at the South Lot, the fabric, the chain fabric that runs along the parking lot that we strap to the metal poles, that needs to be replaced as well. So again, a lot of different ongoing projects regarding building maintenance, infrastructure, et cetera, that we need to account for in the future. And I just didn't, wanted to mention too, that, I'm not sure everybody's aware, but Sand Hill Cove Beach recently received a $3.1 million in federal funds for upgrades that include a boardwalk, environmentally friendly amenities, and better accessibility. So again, Sand Hill Cove is going to get a nice little facelift over there. So again, the need, the need to keep the property up is there. The need for our infrastructure to be where it needs to be. Our fire alarm, our fire alarm testing, our fire alarm systems all need to be upgraded. So there's, there's a lot of things going on daily, even throughout the winter, that we're constantly addressing with the beach enterprise fund. Revenue comparisons. Again, a lot of information on this screen. As you can see, for 2023, we do have a loss in some revenue in, in quite a few of the areas regarding our miscellaneous receipts, adult beach passes, youth passes, et cetera. And it looks like, right now, we are about $77,000 under in these particular categories than we were last year. However, I have been informed by Christine Wilson, the Director of Finance, that we do have some nice investment income that will be coming in this year. So I'm excited about that. I believe that is going to be around $100,000. So that's exciting news. Thank you, Christine, for that. And one thing I wanted to point out with the daily admission sales. Daily admission is about $965,000. So that's, that's people paying to come onto the beach. And that equates to almost 81,000 people coming to Narragansett Town Beach. In addition to that, the daily parking sales. So that's people that are parking in the West Lot, that are paying the $10 and $15 during the weekends and holidays. So that equates to a little bit over about 16,373 vehicles, so non-resident vehicles that were parking in the West Lot. So the reason I bring that up is, is again, we, we take a lot of grief that, you know, people can't get here, people can't come here, they can't use the beach. But I think these numbers show just the opposite. I think we are making every accommodation that we can to get people or give people the ability to park in our parking lots. Yes, we have a cap. We can't fit everybody, but we're doing our very best. In conclusion, 2024 policy and fee strategies. So the important thing that we want to talk about now that we have the enterprise fund policy in place is fee modifications. So fee modifications should be based on a need to keep the enterprise fund close or at target. So as we know, we have a minimum, we have an optional, or optimal, I'm sorry, and then we have a maximum. So right now, the beach enterprise fund is at the optimal. So I think further discussion is down the road. Is, is the optimal, is that good? Should we stay at the optimal? Or should we be a little bit more than the optical? Because again, we want to be able to, to have money to be able to do the capital projects that we need to do without exhausting the funds in the enterprise fund. So again, we're going to discuss that. The Rec Advisory Board is going to look at that with me. I know I have the backing of the Finance Committee as well for assistance with that. So we're going to make a determination, where do we need to be? And then, if we are short, how do we get there? What changes should we make? And then, we'll, we'll see where we're going to be, and we'll present that information to the council. After we do that, then, we hope a comprehensive review of policies and fees should only take place every two or three years. So I think that, that'll be good for all of us. Again, we've made, we'll make a decision. We need to get to point A. After each audit, we'll examine where we are. If we don't, if we're happy with the number, if we're happy with where the enterprise fund is, then there won't be a need for any change. So hopefully, we'll be able to, to go down that path. Also, fee modifications should have some balance between resident and non-resident impact. Of course, we all know, everybody pays to go to the beach, whether it's a resident for their seasonal parking pass, seasonal beach pass. Our senior pass is currently free, but the seniors still have to pay the $50 for their parking pass. So again, there is, there is a need for that balance. So we're hoping that if we do have to make changes or request for changes for increases, we will, of course, take all of that into account. And as the Town Council President said, if we do make recommendations, they will be made at the January 7th, 2024 meeting. Mr. Lynch, would you like to say anything?
So we, we, we wanted to make sure that you had a, a longer-term picture of what's happening at the beach. In the years past, sometimes, we presented year-to-year anomalies, and they don't really give you the full trend picture of what's happening in terms of the, the entity. So we hope this hits the right buttons in terms of what you need as policymakers to understand the operations of a key asset of the town. And it feels like, when you go through the, the numbers and look at the survey, and this is, I think, what I'm saying, I think, is supported by the entire Rec Advisory Board. A good number of them are here this evening. The beach is a well-run organization. As Michelle pointed out, almost 200,000 people a year come to our beach. And if you think of that, it's sort of like 12 Narragansett populate, you know, town populations have come through those beach doors each year. Now, if you, that's, it's a lot of people that go on the beach. So it will always be high-profile. There will always be some complaints. We're hopeful that the Rec Advisory, I mean, the Rec Department will always strive to do better and improve perspective and customer satisfaction at the beach. But it's, when you look at the cleanliness, when you look at the beach experience right now, I, I think it represents a very, very well-run organization. It is an entity that the revenue has been essentially flat. When you look at the average of the revenue growth rate, it's, it's very, very minimal over the past five years. And we've tried to bookend it on the outside of COVID and then with the two years after COVID, so you can, so it sort of blends into that. Expenses have been going up, as I think they have in all of our lives in every, everything that we do, in every supply and service and product that we buy. And the margins have gotten very, very thin. We, the margins, frankly, were too rich in years past. When you saw the revenue was $2.5 million and the, the beach was keeping $500,000 of it, $500,000 of it. That's, that's a very rich margin. Right now, as of last year, it's $99,000 on a $2.5 million entity, which is basically, the beach enterprise fund gets to keep four cents of every dollar it takes in. And it will probably be below that when we run the audited numbers for 2023. So we don't know what we're going to be coming back in January with, but I would anticipate that there would be some recommendations for pricing in some of the categories. And we're hopeful that we can look at it comprehensively. We can look at when's the last time fees were changed on a particular service. And that could, that could be a trigger as well for keeping the, keeping the enterprise fund at that $4.5 million target, which was a lot of work done, legwork by Chris Wilson and by the Finance Committee to establish that, not lo, not only for the beach enterprise fund, but as Michelle said, for the other three. So that's a very key. I think that will help have a more rational discussion in January because oftentimes, fee recommendations would come forward, and there were some people who believed that the beach already had too much money in its savings account, and other people thought it was too little. And now, after a multi-month, you know, fiscal run of discipline on that, you've been, you have approved the right target. So that's what I think the Rec Advisory Board will be counseling with Michelle on, to keep that within that target, even as a number of capital projects are anticipated and come before you. So that's what I think we're thinking of on the civilian side of this business. And we're hopeful that we continue to have a, one of the best beaches in southern New England or New England. And we, we want to take care of it and cherish it and have it available for the generations to come. Thank you.
I'll set, I'll set, Michelle. Okay. So thank, thank you for that presentation. Thank you for all that information. I'm really happy that we have a set point now, or a range of where we need to be. I think that's important. Again, so the recommendations are going to come to the Town Council for review and approval at the January 2nd, 2024 meeting, which is the day after New Year's Day. So it's on a Tuesday, just to let everyone know. So at this point, I will, I will go to the council. If the council members have any questions and or comments, now's the time to ask. I will start off to my right side randomly. Mr. Ferandi.
Eva, before, can we just recognize, so Mr. Lynch is the new Chair of the Recreation Board. I don't know if anybody watching at home recognized the title. We also do have three members, as Michelle. Michelle, could you, could you please rise? And Michelle, could you identify your three new members of your Rec Board? Because they do an awful lot of volunteer work for us, and they should be thanked.
So in the pink sweater, we have Jan, Janet Maroney Cassetta. Next to her is Roberta Brady. And Philippe, I forget your last name, LeBlanc. So Philippe is brand-new to the board, and he attended last week's Rec Advisory Board meeting. And his son is here. Excellent. Very good. And we're grateful to have everybody as part of that board.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks for being here. Mr. Ferandi.
Thank you, Eva. Well, thank you for that complete and explanation and all on the financials. It's, it's really great to get a snapshot of where we're at right now. And, you know, the five-year plan can show some trends. You know, we've, we've increased some of the fees before, but I mean, it's pretty interesting how the, the actual, you know, revenue is, like you said, is pretty flat, Dennis, and overall. So, you know, even this year, I would expect it to be like a lot lower because of the beach. You know, the, the days maybe not sunny and all that, but it was a little bit higher than last, of '22. So, and I do agree that every so often, you really have to take a deeper dive into it. And then, we have the fund balance, where we, you know, some kind of an adjustment for a, you know, good, better, best balance that we're looking at. It can help lend us to some good decisions on, you know, where to be for the next year. So looking forward to, you know, getting your 23-year end and see what that looks like, to see if there are any decisions need to be made. But, but thanks for your efforts. It's been really great to get this in front of everybody.
Counselor Cicilline Benano, any comments?
Thank you for the great presentation. No questions or comments at this point, other than that.
Counselor Kopeck.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you also. I appreciate the, the presentation.
I appreciate the presentation. I thought it was really interesting. I think that the Enterprise Fund change is really so valuable to us and I'm so glad that we've been able to make that happen. I actually did a little math myself, which, believe me, is a struggle, but I did it. I like to look at things in terms of percentage of change over time. I only have the data for two years. Interestingly enough, overall, you know, the number of days was, we had what looked like fewer beach days this year, but actually, we also had fewer days this year than last year. So it comes out almost exactly the same in terms of the number of days that were closed. So that's kind of interesting. Also, I thought it was interesting to see the percent change in terms of, you know, I don't, some of the categories are really minuscule in terms of the total revenue that we have. So I don't worry about those particularly one way or the other. Although that clothing receipt is very low. But I'll have to start buying more Narragansett stuff. But interestingly, one of the highest changes was in daily parking fees, which, you know, it'd be interesting to try and parse why that is and what that means. However, when you look at some of the data concerning, you know, the lots not being full, you know, there's a possibly interesting solution there. Because I think when people aren't parking in our lots, they're parking on the streets. And so that's, you know, that's something of concern, not necessarily to the beach, but certainly to the town. So I think that's kind of interesting. I also, when I was looking at the potential capital ideas for the future, one of the things that I think we need to take a look at when we talk about fees is the return on investment for some of those capital, you know, activities. So one of the things I would be thinking about would be, you know, if we're going to redo the parking lot for the North Beach Clubhouse and the Cabanas, the question is, you know, is there a return on investment there that we can think about? And do we then look at fees and costs of the North Beach Clubhouse for rentals, et cetera, to see if there's a way to get back some of the investment through fees? Just, you know, it's one idea. Also, I do hope we have a permeable surface there. Because I had to say that right. Another thought that, as you can see, I did a lot of looking here at various and sundry things. I was curious, because one of the things you said when you're talking about shoreline mapping and analysis and that we would continue to do an annual review, do you have any idea, using the drones, of what that cost is? Any thought at all? It's fine if you don't.
So I don't, but I do have a conversation started with URI. Because again, this is the final year of the LIDAR study. And with working with Christine and also the Trust and preparing for potential storm damage, it's going to be very important for us to continue to examine the shoreline of the beach to again, get that snapshot of where we are. So URI is going to be getting back to me on a possible smaller program of drone footage that we can do for a lot less than the cost of a LIDAR test to keep up with that data in the event we do have a natural disaster.
Okay, I was just curious because since the shoreline mapping project will be done, you know, it'd be interesting to see what the cost would be in relation to the cost of the actual project that URI did do. I had one other thing that I have to find. Hold on one second. Oh, two things, actually. One of the capital improvement projects you were considering is additional ADA wheelchairs and ADA accessible mats. And I think one of the, you know, we did have somebody, a young lady, come and speak to us. And I understand the issue with the south, the south side of part of the beach. But I hope that there's, you know, maybe there's something else out there that we can do to ensure that we can get, you know, people with difficult access to the shoreline because it's, you know, it's a wonderful, we all know, it's a wonderful place to be. So I really would, I really am in favor of doing that. The other thing that I'm in favor of, we talked about, you know, having access for residents in the town. And one of the areas that I don't know that we've ever looked at carefully is the fact that we do have residents who live in Narragansett who are not, you know, particularly financially well-off. And I think we might want to take a look at a way to ensure their ability to get access to the beach with lower both walk-on fees and possibly parking fees. I also, I'm actually in favor of, you know, having seniors pay a little something to go to the beach. I think that many seniors could afford that. And I think that would add a little bit of revenue, but it also might be offset, the ability to offset people who might not have the access and may have children and can't get to, you know, it's their reach too. So I think that's very important. Otherwise, I really liked this format a lot. I think this was a really good presentation and I appreciate the mix of information. And thank you for the great job that you do every single year.
Counselor Lawler.
Thank you. Great job by Michelle. Thank you so much for this. One thing, and Deb asked a question about, and I wanted to see if you could expand on it because you did expand to us at the REC Board, that you were able to put together the shoreline mapping along with the carrying capacity study that those two groups are interfacing. If you could just talk a bit more about that, because I think it's a really important thing that you've done.
So unfortunately, I don't have information from Wendy Laurent, the chief engineer, on her discussions with URI. I know she was shared the LIDAR studies to date. So again, whatever information she would extrapolate from that to use for the new report, again, she has not discussed that with me. I know she has provided a preliminary group of information over the last week, but again, it's not done yet. It was basically just the survey results at this point, you know, based on people's comments. But she intends to provide a more formal document regarding that and also obviously, the study itself in its entirety.
Exactly. So as time goes, they'll be working hand-in-hand, which is really important because they're both talking about the health and the well-being of the beach going forward.
Absolutely.
The one part, Michelle, and I'm not quite sure if we'll be talking about this on January 3rd, is there a comparison for the facilities, whether it be the North Beach Clubhouse and the lockers from 2022 to 2023? I don't want to put you on the spot, but somebody asked me about this today. It's not included in the report.
Right, and we didn't include that only for the simple reason is we wanted to keep the PowerPoint kind of specific and to the point regarding, you know, the revenue and expenses and also talking about the Beach Enterprise Fund. But basically, the income that's generated from Cabanas, North Pavilion changing rooms and South Pavilion lockers is usually roughly about $500,000. There is sometimes a fluctuation of $3,000 to $5,000 and that happens to come from people that lease the North Pavilion changing rooms, whether or not they're going to get that extra non-resident parking pass or if they're going to have the two adult, extra adults that they're allowed to have. So they're kind of, I don't want to say they're minuscule, but again, the answer to that is roughly about $500,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So I'm just really, I did like the format as well. I will also echo that compliment. Also really happy that we're going to be having the dates of all the increases in the different categories. So that'll be helpful for the meeting. And just if we have the finalized data, our finances, that would be wonderful. So I don't really have any further comments. Again, we appreciate all the efforts and just the staff that really takes care of the beach because it really is a gem in our town. Definitely my favorite beach and place in the world. I can even say that. So at this time, if there's no further questions or comments, I don't know if our town manager would like to comment.
Thank you, Council President. Just to restate again what everyone on the council has stated, I'd like to thank the Director of Box and Recreation, all the beach staff, the seasonal and the full-time staff that are assigned there during the summer, and Bill and Linda and Bridgette and the REC Advisory Board for all their input and not just Box and Recreation, but the beach itself. And it shows all the hard work that they do. And that's why we're here. This is, it fine-tunes it every year. And I'd like to thank all of them. They do a great job.
Thank you. So actually, this actually will conclude our work session for this evening. Thank you for everybody who attended, everybody watching. We do have our council meeting at 7:00 PM. If anyone would like to stay or just come back and watch us. Thank you.